Good evening, welcome to the Galley Towns Report of Education. Today is August 10th, 2020. This is a regular virtual meeting. It is 6:00 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Avery. Dr. Rashare Blough.
Here.
Mrs. Chester.
Here.
Mr. Gentile.
Here.
Mr. Nor.
Present.
Dr. Permenter.
Here.
Mr. Dase.
Here.
And Mrs. Corman.
Here. Can we all rise for a flag salute led by Mrs. Chester, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In accordance with Public Law 231, thank you. In accordance with Public Law 231, this meeting was provided to the press, the Galley Towns Resort Building, on August 7th, 2020. We have approval minutes this evening from July 27th, the regular meeting, and July 27th, the executive session virtual. All in favor, if you could just raise your hand, please? I see everybody raising their hand. Any opposition? Madeline? Or are you abstaining? Madeline, are you a no or are you abstaining?
I'm yes.
Oh, you're a yes, okay. So, any abstentions? Thank you. Reading of communications, please.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, President Corman. We have received a thank you note from retirees Susan Alexander, Melanie Becker, and Deatress D. Fields.
Thank you. Continuing with presentations, please.
Thank you, President Corman. And this evening, I am going to be presenting the Restart and Recovery Plan for Education. So, we will be doing a screen sharing during this portion of the meeting. And if you are a regular at our board meetings or are on the restart committee or attended last week's virtual town hall, some of this information will not be new. If you have not attended any of those or have not seen the update recently provided to families and staff, there will be a lot of new information. So, if we go to the first slide, the first section of the presentation includes some updates. And I start off with these pieces of information as opposed to the plan itself for two reasons. One, these are both items that affect the plan. And secondly, information has changed since the update and the original draft of the plan. So, on this first update, we see that on August 3rd, the state, the governor during his address, changed the original guidance regarding students wearing of face coverings. And he announced that they needed to wear face coverings the entire day. On that same day, school districts received written information. And I don't believe these details were publicly reviewed. So, I think it's important for everyone to know that it is not as simple as students wearing their face covering the entire time, all day. On the bus, students will need to wear them. When they arrive at school, they will be wearing them. But there's also a list of exceptions. So, I'm not going to read all of the exceptions to you, but I do want to highlight a few things. If the student has a documented medical condition, that could be a reason that the face covering is not worn all day. If we're outside in PhysEd and it's very warm. If the student has a disability reflected in their IEP and that disability would preclude the student from wearing a face covering. We will be serving both breakfast and lunch during the school day. During eating and drinking, it is not required to be worn. Obviously, that's a common sense item, but I still felt it was important to state that. Additionally, during a class like PhysEd, as long as the room is well ventilated and the students are appropriately spaced, face covering does not need to be worn. The same is true in a music class where those same conditions can be met. In addition to that, and if you look at the larger print on the screen where it begins with the word researchers, there are concerns with adults, but particularly in children with discomfort occurring through prolonged periods of wearing a face covering. So, we are allowed to give breaks to the wearing of face coverings. And this should only happen, let's say, if we have the opportunity to take the children outside or in situations when they are appropriately distanced and, for example, with the windows in the classroom opened. So, I do know that the response to our commitment form changed in the split between all virtual and hybrid following the governor's announcement. So, I have tried to put these details out to make sure people have the accurate information regarding face coverings. I will also add that when a student cannot wear a face covering because they fall under one of these exceptions, a face shield is recommended. However, I do not believe it is required. Next slide, please. The other really important piece of information applies to Executive Order 173 and indoor capacity. And you may recall in prior presentations, I talked about if we remain at the current 25% indoor capacity, or you may realize that recently the governor talked about 25 people, that even our hybrid plan would not work in September. So, in a meeting last week, all of the superintendents in our county requested that the executive county superintendent of schools get the question answered. Does this executive order apply to schools? And what I have copied onto the screen is the exact answer from the New Jersey Department of Education. In simplest terms, it says, because of the measures that the state is requiring, like social distancing, having cohorts of students, the cleaning and disinfecting, the new face covering rules, that the executive order with a 25% capacity or 25 people does not apply to school reopening. And that is good news because that means our plan can be enacted in September even if for other places that capacity does not change. I will add that doesn't preclude the governor from deciding due to data that school is not opening in person. But in terms of being able to implement our hybrid plan, this is good news. Next slide, please. So, now I will get into the actual plan. We can go to the next slide. So, our plan, which includes the state guidance and the detail related to our school district, is 104 pages. I will let you know right now, I am not going over all 104 pages this evening. The Board of Education members do have an electronic copy of the full plan. There is an agenda item to approve submission of the plan, although this state does not require that board resolution. Our county superintendent is requiring and asking that we submit the plan with the board resolution to him. The county superintendent then reviews with a checklist provided by the Department of Ed the entire plan and then holds a meeting, a virtual meeting, with the superintendent of schools. Once the feedback comes from our ECOS, Executive County Superintendent of Schools, any required revisions will be made. And after that, the plan in its entirety will be posted for the public. The presentation tonight does have an overview and information from the various sections of the plan as well as in prior virtual presentations, frequently asked questions, different things that we've done since the planning began. There's a lot of information out there. In addition to that, and I'll talk about this again later, guides related to details of the plan. What does virtual learning for my child look like? What does in-person learning for my child look like? There will be parent-friendly and staff-friendly versions of the information. Finally, that highlighted item. Even after the executive county superintendent gives the revisions and we make them and we post the plan, we need to realize at any time if the government changes any guidance, we will have to adjust the plan. So, the plan itself is divided into four major components. And again, since I'm not going to go over all 104 pages, I wanted you to see the categories of information in each section. And so, conditions for learning really sets the stage for looking at the physical, emotional, the overall well-being of students and staff. Leadership and planning gives guidance to administrators regarding the types of things we should be considering and doing. For example, establishing the restart committee. One of the guiding principles is thinking of equity for our students. In policy and funding, it really is a review of information that has been sent to us in other formats. For example, information about the federal cares funding is included in this section. There are guidelines related to purchasing and use of reserves, something we've done with using maintenance reserve. The continuity of learning section is really about the actual teaching and learning process. In a number of sections, and particularly in this section, there's flexibility for the district to plan what best suits its students and community. It helps to ensure students with disabilities and even other groups like our English language learners, making sure that we are supporting technology, distributing devices, helping with connectivity. How we are focusing the curriculum and pacing guides and doing professional development for both in-person and remote learning to make sure that we're really honing in on what will help students in the current situation. And then certainly, we don't want to forget about professional development for staff as well as the fact that evaluation of staff will continue. So, in the next series of slides, I'm going to give you highlights. I am not going to read these slides word for word. I am just going to point out some different things because this presentation will be posted. The entire board meeting is being recorded and will remain through our YouTube channel. So, this first page really talks about those health and safety kinds of things. Everything from the training for custodial staff to the cleaning and disinfecting to things related to HVAC and touchless systems. One thing I do want to mention is a number of people have talked about the virtual day and aren't you going to use that day for deep cleaning? And our operations manager has been very specific in talking about this with us, that cleaning and disinfecting at the highest level will happen every day. It is one of the reasons for the early dismissal, that we will give our custodial staff enough time through both the manual cleaning that they do and the use of the electrostatic sprayers. I'm just going to pause a moment. Can you go back to that one so folks can look at it for one more moment? Thank you. And next slide, please. This slide gets into some of the issues we've talked about before. One of them is screening. And people often think of temperature checks. And as we have previously discussed, based on the input of medical professionals, including our own nurses, our district doctor of records, professional things we have read, collaboration with other districts, we are not doing temperature checking. Rather, this is the responsibility of families and staff members. There will be a very specific form that will need to be signed. And our staff member will also be trained in doing visual checks of students. We also have plans in place if there is a symptomatic student or staff member during the day. Obviously, a staff member can be allowed to leave should symptoms arise. And for a student, we have a designated isolation area. And obviously, parents will be contacted. There are more detailed procedures based on our consultation with the Department of Health, standing orders from our district doctor of record and other training that our nurses are doing. One of the big questions that people have is contact tracing. What happens if someone comes up as a positive? And we are approaching this from several different angles. Obviously, we are collaborating with the Department of Health who does serve as the lead in contact tracing. One of the state departments recommended training through the Johns Hopkins University. And we are participating in that as well. And that training is being done for all our nurses. So, again, there are more details in the full 104-page plan. I will also add that the Department of Health, at the end of last week, sent us another series of documents related to what happens if someone tests positive. And it's both general public information as well as guidance for us here in the school district. Mrs. Burgess, our director for Student Services who oversees the nurses, she is reviewing all of that information with our nurses. We will be using it to train administration and staff and we'll be sharing it publicly. Again, let's pause a moment. Next slide, please. This slide looks at two of our non-instructional areas. One of them is transportation. And both Mrs. Nixon and I have been in communication with Greater Egg, the lead on the transportation consortium. And you can see that many of the same things that are happening in school are happening on the bus. The face coverings, a guidance for how to seat children on the bus, the skipping of seats. A number of parents have indicated even if they are assigned a bus, their child will not use it and there will be a waiver for that. We will have signs on the bus, hand sanitizer, extra face mask, and certainly, training for the bus company and the staff. In terms of meal service, we are responsible for feeding all the children on free and reduced meals as well as any child who wishes to purchase a meal. We are continuing with universal breakfast as well as both free and reduced lunch and paid-for lunch. For children attending in person on those days, meals will be delivered and will be eaten in the classroom. For those that are not attending in person and for the days that children in the hybrid model are not here in person, there will be meal distribution every Monday. You can also see things like building in time for children to wash their hands before they eat. Next slide, please. This particular slide relates to a section of the plan that looks at the well-being socially, emotionally, the mental health of both students and staff. And even prior to the pandemic, this was a priority to our district. Those of you that were listening or intended to attend meetings during budget development know that we added three mental health professionals to our staff. We've been doing a lot of work with resiliency, with restorative practices, and really have taken a program that we felt was a strong program and are enhancing it even further. And resources and brain breaks and all of this, we are considering both our children and our staff members. Next slide, please. Child care is another area where we've had questions. And we will be continuing our before and after care program that is available for the days that children are attending in session. The after care program will begin at dismissal time. There are only three days during the entire year. I believe it's the day before Thanksgiving, the day before winter break. And while I certainly hope we're not still in this circumstance the last day of school, but childcare is not available the last day of school as well. And certainly, Mr. Lovell, our coordinator, he has already reviewed all the guidance specific to childcare. And myself and other administrators will be working with him and his staff to making sure every guideline is fulfilled for our children taking advantage of that program. We have had some questions from families about the cost and we are fine-tuning that. Obviously, it is starting at the 1:30 time, not the 3:30 time. There are existing staff that we will be able to assign to support the program between that 1:30 and 3:30 start time. Next slide, please. So, now I'm going to jump into the educational piece. And even prior to the state saying that a district has to offer an all-virtual option, it was part of our planning. And so, in this, everything's done virtually. And I have heard from parents on, I will say, both ends of the spectrum. And what I mean by that is I have parents who want every minute of this to be synchronous or live. And then I have other parents who don't want that to happen. I'm not with my kids. Someone else is watching my kid. And so, it will include both aspects, both synchronous, live, where children will know, log on at this time. There will also be recordings. There will also be things posted. And as I have said in the past, it will be a much enhanced version of what occurred in the spring. You could see attendance. I'm still on virtual only. Thank you. Attendance will be taken. There will be grading. And I do want to mention that we have revised our grading policy. And I will be discussing that in detail at the August 24th meeting. And we believe the new system very much aligns itself with the situation we're in with the virtual and hybrid learning and will also be better when school goes back to a more normal setting. There will be, again, a family-friendly guide, training, and more information for everyone about the all-virtual option. The other option, and we now can go to the next slide, is the hybrid option. And this is where students are in school in person two days a week and one day is all-virtual. Our district has selected Monday as the all-virtual day. That helps with both the instructional side and the meal service side. Obviously, when the children are in school, they're live, they're in person with their teacher. I do want to highlight that overwhelmingly, teachers will be moving, not students. The only exception might be something like a pull-out resource program or certain related services. And cleaning and disinfecting will happen in between any time a child uses the same space. I'll use PhysEd as another example. On the days that children are not in person, there will be specific things that they will have to do. There will be videos to watch. There will be things to read. And there will also be a portion of the day where their teacher is virtually with them. So, there's kind of like a hybrid, a blended model within the hybrid model. Students in the same family will be given the same schedule, the A or the B. However, I did have a few parents say I don't want that. And we have honored those requests. And again, if your child is in the hybrid model, you too will get a user-friendly guide. You will get schedules, all the details that you need to understand how that works. On the next slide, I do want to share, and once the plan is approved and you know whether you're in A or a B, this is the schedule for A or B. So, if you notice, every Monday and a couple other days are yellow. They are the all-virtual days for the students in the hybrid model. Then the green days are the A group in person. And the blue days are the B group in person. For the most part, Tuesday and Wednesday, the A group is in person. And Thursday and Friday, the B group is in person. There are a few exceptions and that was done to help even out the days. Again, we will send this calendar to everyone once we know assignments. And obviously, we'll do reminders about this, especially when there's a week where it's a little different. In fact, the very first week of school is different because we start on a Wednesday and it's only a three-day week. But I wanted you to see that visual that families and staff will be given to help them. Next slide, please. So, I do want to mention the commitment forms. We originally gave a due date of last Wednesday. We do understand that there was a storm. I know some people wanted to wait for the town hall meeting. Some people, I think, wanted to wait till tonight's board meeting. We will accept forms through Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 12:00 noon. After that, anyone who does not respond will be assigned to one of the hybrid groups. And I do want to say, for days, we were doing reminders to all families. We now have it narrowed down to the families that have not responded and they will be receiving the reminders. We've been doing, you know, secretaries on the phone with personal phone calls as well as robo calls to those have not responded. I also want to do a reminder that although you had the chance to say I prefer A or B, that is not guaranteed. We need to balance, not just the children in the classroom between the two groups, but on the bus as well. So, we want these forms by Wednesday so that our administrators can work with all the data to come up with the A and B groups. We will then contact every family. If you picked virtual, only, we're confirming that. If you picked hybrid, we're telling you what group your child or children are in. We will also send you the bus waiver form, information about any family that the children need a device. We will send you information about Chromebook pickup. We are also packaging other materials that may be needed at home. So, as the summer progresses, we will continue to send updates and information to help prepare for for school opening. Next slide. I do want to talk a little bit more about the Virtual Learning Committee. This group has been working diligently to take what we learned in the spring, to use professional literature, feedback we've gotten from parents, including parents that have called in and to different meetings or the restart committee. And one big piece is, you know, what does an effective teacher look like in the virtual setting? And distinguishing that between the totally virtual setting and the virtual aspects of the hybrid model. What are we asking students to do? What is a responsible student? And then how can we work with families, respect and support them? And the answers to these three questions are being detailed and then packaged so that teachers and other involved staff, classroom assistants, for example, will receive written guidance and training. I want you to know that administrators will supervise that that effective teacher, what we're asking and what we're telling parents is happening, is actually happening. Families will also get user-friendly guides and training opportunities. And then certainly, when we get down, you know, to the teacher level, teachers will also share specific links and schedules and information. A lot more consistency and detail than what happened last spring. Next slide, please. I did this in another meeting, but want to revisit it again. We have six core values that have been in place for a decade, and they're always important, and they're particularly important during the pandemic. We also are trying to balance the different opinions, the academic and the social, the physical and the mental health. And we hope people understand, and I am serious and joke about this, we know we cannot make everyone happy because there are many different opinions and beliefs about what school should look like. And then finally, we ask for patience, that first of all, you go to that core value of respect and respect different viewpoints. And we're trying to meet different needs. What's tailored to a special ed? How can we support families? And we need that patience with ourselves and each other. I will mention that we did compile a list of daycare options for families that are concerned. I picked the hybrid model, but what am I doing on the days my child's not in school? Or I need an option other than the school district's childcare. That was shared out today, posted. We are not endorsing these programs, but we felt it was a community service. So we ask that you remember these values as we continue our planning and progress toward September 1st school opening for staff and September 9th school opening for students. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Giaquinto?
I just wanted to make a comment. You know, your planning and the administrators and the team that you've, you know, compiled, this plan is very comprehensive, very thoughtful. I know it's a lot of work, and I just want to commend you and your staff for all the work that you've done. I know it is, it's never been done. Hopefully, it'll never have to be done again. But I know you, you all have worked tremendously hard. And, you know, our thoughts and thanks to you and your staff.
President Carmen, thank you for saying that. And we are fortunate, we have a great team of really dedicated people. And it's amazing that there's a 104-page plan, and there's still work to do. But that is deeply appreciated.
It's very, very thoughtful, and that's appreciated.
One question.
Yes.
With the childcare, what time does it go to? What time does it end?
Six o'clock.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Giaquinto?
I have one question, quick.
Yes.
With the virtual option with our special education students, will we be offering that they can come in for related services? Or will they, that will that all be done virtually as well?
Mrs. Chester, if I remember the guidance from the state, that if a family wants a portion of the program in person, and I believe related service is an example, that can be done. And the important thing for a parent to do would be to communicate that to the case manager or to Dr. Baldwin, so that when we are, when we're looking at the main response of hybrid versus virtual, we can plan for that specificity.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to public comment. Heidi, if we can put the form up for public comment, please. So if anybody has public comment, if they could call 609-748-1250, extension 1022. Please allow time for the call to go through. There's approximately a 30-second delay. If it's busy, do not leave a message. Please hang up and try again. We will have somebody physically there taking calls.
President Carmen and board members in the public, I will mention while we're waiting, at last Wednesday's virtual town hall, there were about 215 people watching at any moment, and we answered phone calls for about an hour. So we did get a number of calls during the town hall meeting.
Thank you. Okay, it's been about 45 seconds. Mr. Ruffey, do you have any phone calls yet?
No, and I did test the phone before we started.
Perfect. So for the public, we will be asking for public comment at the end as well. So if you do have any comments, please feel free to call in at the end. Moving on to superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, President Carmen. I will turn it over to Mrs. Hal Galco for her report.
Thank you very much. Since the last meeting, I've been working with administration on policy matters, on COVID return to school matters, on staff matters and student matters, as well as preparing to do some in-services in the district. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Hal Galco? Thank you.
Thank you. We do have the resolution for the submission of the plan.
Can I motion to submit the restart recovery plan? Mr. Nor?
So moved.
And Mr. Gentile, thank you. Is there any other, is there any comment? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Nor?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery? Dr. Bashar Blough?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Dr. Permenter?
Yes.
Vice President Dace?
Yes.
And President Carmen?
Yes, moving on to curriculum instruction, please.
Thank you. We do have one item for a Stockton University clinical student for the fall semester.
Can I have motion to approve item one under curriculum instruction, please? Mr. Gentile and Dr. Permenter, thank you. Is there any comment? Sherry, did you have a comment or no? Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Permenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Dr. Bashar Blough?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Nor?
Yes.
Vice President Dace?
Yes.
And President Carmen?
Yes, Finance and School Operations. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Nixon.
Thank you. We have one resolution to approve the submission of the New Jersey DOE 2020 Bridging the Digital Divide Grant and the Mount List.
Can I have motion to approve item one under Finance and School Operations? Mr. Gentile and Dr. Permenter, thank you. Is there any board comment? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Permenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery? Dr. Bashar Blough?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Nor?
Yes.
Vice President Dace?
Yes.
And President Carmen?
Yes, Facilities and Maintenance Informational Items. Mr. Dace, there was a facilities committee meeting?
Yes, we had actually two meetings this morning, one followed up by a Smithville project meeting. First one, everything seems to be going good at the best of yours at Pomona and Arthur Rand. One of the questions brought up, I think it was Mr. McCleary, the principal, about dust getting into the office and everything, and it was putting up a temporary wall, I mean shield, keep the dust and everything from flowing into the main office there at Arthur Rand. Other than that, everything seems to be going good. And the temporary, yeah. Needing my notes here. On the update at Smithville for drainable repairs, the gentleman was there, the contractor was there, and he went over a lot of things. A lot of questions were asked of him, and he asked a lot of questions as far as like, well, Rocco told him that anybody who comes to work in the site must sign in, or so we know who is there working. And a gentleman says, well, they will all have shirts all with the company's name. And Rocco said, no, we want a signature, or actually, somebody personally sign in. That way, we know who's working. He promised to communicate with everybody, and everything went fairly good. Joy? Was that a mess-up one?
Nothing, thank you, Rich. We also had a virtual facilities committee meeting last Monday evening on August 3rd. And we have a bid opening this week on Wednesday, August 12th, at 2:00 p.m. for the district operations building.
What is the anticipated cost of the operations building? Approximate anticipated cost?
The original estimate was around $2 million, and that's what was transferred out of capital reserve for the project.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments on facilities and maintenance, please?
I have one comment, is that I believe Ted Hopkins said today, there was, what, 26 individuals, contractors who placed bids for that facility. So it should be, should be interesting.
They previously placed bids under the previous?
No, there was 20, 26 requests for bid packages.
Okay, okay. Okay, moving on to community use of school facilities, please.
Hello. Community use of school facilities remains suspended.
Personnel, please.
Thank you. The first item I will read in its entirety. It's a resolution to accept with regret the letter of intent to retire from Pamela Backler, Pomona preschool teacher, effective July 27, 2020. Mrs. Backler has worked in the Galloway Township Public School District for 21 years, and her dedication and service to students and staff are appreciated by our entire school family.
Thank you. Can I motion to approve item one under personnel, please? Dr. Permenter? Mr. Nor, thank you. Mr. Gentile, you, we lost your video, just so you know. Is there any board comment? May I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Permenter?
Yes.
Mr. Nor?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Dr. Bashar Blough?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Vice President Dace?
Yes.
And President Carmen?
Yes.
Thank you. The next section is hiring, and I will just review the name and the position. Ariel Rocco, school counselor at Smithville. Courtney Smith, kindergarten teacher at Smithville. Jacqueline Keeping, first grade teacher at Arthur Rand. Amanda Cornell, fourth grade teacher at Roland. Toni Vanifro, kindergarten teacher at Roland. Tiffany Quinn, kindergarten teacher at Roland. Andrew Fantasia, sixth grade math teacher at Roland. Brittany Tater, sixth grade math teacher at Reed's. Rachel Weber, fifth grade teacher at Arthur Rand. Christine Summers, 10-month secretary at Roland. Meredith Hoops, part-time kindergarten classroom assistant at Rand. Julie Compton, part-time kindergarten classroom assistant at Reed's. And then we have Norei Sangigaz, my apologies, custodian at Reed's, and Huya Simon, a part-time custodian at Smithville.
Thank you. Can I motion to approve items two through 15 under personnel, please? Dr. Bashar Blough and Dr. Permenter, thank you. Is there any board comment? May I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Bashar Blough?
Yes.
Dr. Permenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mr. Nor?
Yes.
Vice President Dace?
Yes.
And President Carmen?
Yes, supplemental personnel, please.
Thank you. One item is to approve nursing staff for summer work. As you can imagine, they're very involved in the planning. And then an item for two staff members who are providing training.
Thank you. Can I motion to approve items one and two under supplemental personnel, please? Mr. Gentile and Dr. Permenter, thank you. Is there any board comment? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Permenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Dr. Bashar Blough?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Nor?
Yes.
Vice President Dace?
Yes.
And President Carmen?
Yes. Policy, please.
Thank you. Unfortunately, due to the storm and the power and internet outages, the policy committee was not able to meet. I did communicate with them electronically. And interestingly enough, school boards had sent us a number of policies covering things related to the pandemic. In consultation and with the assistance of Mrs. Alco, we actually were able to turn that into just two policies. The first one is a pandemic policy that covers areas of instructional and non-instructional operations. So rather than making revisions to a lot of different policies, all the things that might change in operations or needed board policy are combined into that one policy. Secondly, there is a policy specific to remote learning. Tonight is the first reading of the, of the, both of these policies that are entirely new. We can take any comment, and we will be meeting with the policy committee prior to August 24th. So if there are any changes that need to be made, they can be done before the second reading and adoption.
Dr. Permenter, as chair of the policy meeting, do you have any comments?
I looked at, I looked at the pandemic policy and the remote learning policy, and we'll probably make some little minor revisions.
Okay, thank you. So can I motion to approve items one and two under policy, please? Mr. Gentile and Dr. Permenter, thank you. Is there any other board comment? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Dr. Permenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Avery?
Yes.
Dr. Bashar Blough?
Yes.
Mrs. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Nor?
Yes.
Vice President Dace?
Yes.
And President Carmen?
Yes, notice of public meetings, please.
Thank you. We have, as I mentioned, an August 24th meeting and then a September 21st meeting. I noted they could be virtual or in-person. The guidance that the executive order doesn't apply to the 25 limit when school opens, it did not say anything about something like a board meeting. Before August 24th, I am going to speak to Mrs. Hal Galco and talk to our county superintendent to see, are we able to have an in-person board meeting even if, you know, more than 25 people ended up being in attendance? Or do we need to wait for that until school opens? Obviously, we will keep the board and public updated about that.
Thank you. Can we, Heidi, put the public comment slide back up, please? At this time, we'll open At this time, we'll open the meeting for public comment. If you could call into 609-748-1250, extension 1022. Please allow enough time. There's approximately a 30-second delay. Do not hang up. A live person will pick up. If it's busy, please try and call again. Mr. Murphy, do we have any calls?
No, we do not.
Okay. Going back to the regular meeting then. I will just go around the board for both old and new business. Jim, do you have anything this evening? You're on, you're on mute, Jim.
I just wanted to echo your comments about all the hard work and the thoroughness of the reopening plan. Kudos to all of the staff that were involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Permenter?
Yes, I'd like to echo that. I think you've done a phenomenal job, Dr. Giacquinto, you and the administrators and the other participants. I know it's been a labor of love and frustration, but you handled it well, and thank you.
Mrs. Avery?
I just have a question about busing for a minute. In between the high school bus runs and the elementary runs, are they gonna like sanitize, like are they gonna bog the buses? Or how's that supposed to work?
Yes, buses absolutely have to be cleaned between runs. And in fact, training is being done for the bus companies, exactly what is expected and what that cleaning and disinfecting needs to entail.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nor?
Yes, I don't know if it's appropriate to bring this up now or in closed session. I have some concerns about Mr. Chester.
John, that would be in closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Dr. Beshar Blough?
Just to echo what others have said and express my deep gratitude to the entire district for all the work that went into the opening plan.
Thank you. Mrs. Chester?
Same thing. Just thank you for all the work on the plan. It really was a very detailed plan. So, good job. Thanks.
And Mr. Days?
Everybody said it all. I can't thank the staff, administration, what they're doing. And putting the school and the kids first, really, making sure they learn. So thank you, thank you.
I think we're all in agreement then. So we do have executive session this evening. So be it resolved that the Galloway Township Board of Education shall meet an executive session on August 10th, 2020, immediately for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privilege. Further resolve that the discussion of each subject matter in executive session will be disclosed to the public when the matter's been settled, unless such is otherwise prohibited by law. Show of hands, all in favor for going into executive session at this time? Madeline, is that a yes? Of all, yeses, any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, and you will be getting a link for a new Zoom meeting, so you'll have to close out of this and go back.
I forwarded it.
Okay. And then we will resume public meeting at this Zoom meeting session after executive. Thank you. Amy, I'm sorry?
I was just saying, we don't anticipate any action being taken.
I don't, it might just be me, but I can't hear you at all. It sounds all blurry.
I can just say, Mrs. Hal Galco was trying to share that we do not anticipate any action to be taken after executive session.
Thank you. We don't anticipate action being taken. Thank you.
We do not.
Okay, thank you. So I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We're waiting for John. And there are only eight of you. Oh gosh, yeah. I knew that.
Soon to be nine.
Soon to be nine. And we have Mr. Noor. Perfect. So I have a motion to go back into public session from Mr. Gentile and a second from Dr. Bashar Blough. Can we just raise our hand all in favor to go back into public session? And that's everybody with a yes. Is there any other comment for the board members going around the board? Jim?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Dr. Parmenter?
No, I have nothing further, thank you.
Mr. Noor.
Surprise.
I don't either, everybody stay safe.
Mrs. Chester. Madeline?
Nope.
Alexa?
No.
Rich?
Nothing other than everybody stay safe like John said. Take care.
Thank you, and nothing from me. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Gentile, second Dr. Parmenter, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.
Take care everyone. Bye bye.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.